Who was that?
What?
Picture of.
Oh, in.
Fire chief.
Huh?
Oh.
Fire leader.
Oh, yeah, Mike.
So we got, got all of us. I saw at 6:30. Should we get started?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we will get started now. First of all, we have to officially read ourselves out of the closed session. Do we have a motion on that?
Sure. I move that the city council member certified by a recorded vote that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the moot, in the closed meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote, please?
Councilor McGill?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and we are now back in open session officially. We will begin the 6:30 business meeting with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Counselors, any announcements?
Yes, I have one. Earlier this month, we received a presentation on our first climate, our first Charlottesville Climate Action Plan. City staff invites the community to share their thoughts on the plan and ideas for how we as a community can move climate action forward. Community comments on the plan are requested by Wednesday, November 9th. The planned document and ways to engage with city staff directly can be assessed at charlottesville.gov/climateplan. There are also four upcoming office hours this month that community members can drop into and learn more about the plan and next steps. Dates and details are available at charlottesville.gov/climateplan. And again, individual feedback or feedback from organizations is requested by Wednesday, November 9th.
Thank you. And I think it's probably important to note, because there was some confusion after this, after the meeting last two weeks ago. We heard a report on the Climate Action Plan on October 3rd in our 4 o'clock meeting. The 4 o'clock meeting, of course, is not a time we make decisions. We hear reports. And so a lot of folks thought, okay, we've now heard the report. That's it. That's all we're going to do with the Climate Action Plan. In fact, council has not voted on it. Council has not accepted it. We've not had public response to it, and this is the opportunity to begin that public comment, public response. And there will be other, there will be, at some point, there will be an official time for people to respond, and council will officially vote on it. So for those of you who have contacted me saying, why was there no comment, period? Why was there no opportunity for public comment? It's coming. This is the first step in it that Councilor Payne just read. Any other announcements?
Mayor, did you receive my email earlier?
I don't know.
Regarding Mrs. G.
I did not.
Okay. Well, then, instead, I will take this opportunity as the ACRJ representative that we would like to offer our condolences to the family of Major Jacetta Murray Key, Mrs. G, the Associate Superintendent of ACRJ. In addition to her 15 years of work within the ACRJ facility, she also served her community. She became an adjunct professor of criminal justice at PBCC, taught frequently at the Jail Academy, ran and won a seat on the Fluvana County School Board, and served on the Fluvana County Planning Commission. She was also very active with her church and led her choir and traveled locally with her own band. We are grateful for Mrs. G's service to the community and send our condolences to her family.
And I would add, as one who deals a lot with the staff at the jail, Ms. Murray Key was one of the truly exemplary employees of someone who actually legitimately, honestly cared about the inmates as humans, who wanted to help them get rehabilitated, who wanted to help them not suffer. I mean, there's some, some folks who work at jails who just seem to want to help people suffer. And, and I've just been so glad over the years to know Ms. Murray Key, to know that she was not one of those. And she was really an outstanding person to deal with, and her, and she will be, she will be missed. I wanted to add one other announcement. On October 30th, at 1:00 PM, out at the Ivy Creek Nature Center, Natural Area, the Riverview Farm Historic Marker will be dedicated. And if you have not been out to the Ivy Creek Natural Area for a while, you may be astounded at the amount of restoration work that has been going on out there, and the restoration of the Riverview Farm. And it's, it's really quite a, quite a thing to see. And I suggest to people, go out there 1 o'clock on Sunday, October 30th, and, and look around and, and see the dedication of the marker, and also everything that's out there. So are there any items for recognition?
We do have the proclamation.
True. I will note that I, I did a proclamation on behalf of the Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, October 13th of 2022. Some of you may have noted that at the South Tower at the UVA Hospital, it was lit up for the, the three colors for, for the metastatic breast cancer awareness of teal and pink and green. It's been an important thing for, for the local community that deals with breast cancer issues. For many of us, we've got a family member who has been a victim of metastatic breast cancer and lost members of our family that way. And it, it's really, when, when you start looking around, you realize just how many people are touched by, by metastatic breast cancer, and how little research we're actually doing into the metastatic piece of it. And part of the Awareness Day was to, to, to build the pressure for increasing. Right now, 5% of the research dollars go to the metastatic piece of breast cancer and fighting it. And they want to get that up to 30%, because it's, it's the metastatic part that kills people. Anyway, I was delighted to do that proclamation for a worthy cause. Any other proclamations or recognitions? Okay. In that case, it's time for the Consent Agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the Consent Agenda, please?
Consent Agenda, number two, minutes, September 6th, council meeting. Three, resolution appropriating fiscal year 2023 fire programs, aid to locality, fire fund, $186,776, second reading. Four, resolution appropriating funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Education and Training Program, SNAP, and ENT Laptop Loaner Program, $15,400, second reading. Five, resolution appropriating American Rescue Plan funds from the Commonwealth for utility bill assistance, $29,524.18, second reading. Six, resolution approving compromise of claim wastewater leak credit, $31,516.31 for 525 Ridge Street Management Services Corporation, one reading. Seven, resolution update, council meeting procedures to update electronic participation provisions, one reading. Eight, resolution, a resolution to appropriate funds for the Charlottesville Albemarle Adult Drug Treatment Court. Grant award, $240,000, one of two readings. Nine, resolution, Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act grant, $452,704, one of two readings.
Thank you. So we'll now take public comment regarding items on the Consent Agenda just read by the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. In the Zoom webinar, you may select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you've joined by phone and wish to speak on the Consent Agenda, you can press star nine on your phone. We have no in-person speakers, so let's find out who we've got online. Is there anybody who would like to speak to the Consent Agenda items?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
All right. So we'll close the public hearing as to that aspect. Is there anyone in council chamber? We know there's nobody else here, okay. Is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
I move that we adopt the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments from council? Ms. Thomas, you take the vote, please.
Councilor McGill?
Yes.
Councilor Payne?
Yes.
Councilor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five nothing to adopt the Consent Agenda. Mr. Rogers, is there a report from the City Manager's Office?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of items. The Charlottesville Fire Department recognized National Fire Prevention Week last week, starting on October 9th, sharing daily tips on social media, and visiting the following neighborhoods throughout the week. West Havens, South First Street, Friendship Court, Greenstone Downtown Mall. CFD is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those who live in and visit our city. We're recognizing that fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. The 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, serves to remind us of the importance of having a home fire escape plan. Smoke detectors sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of a fire in which you may not, may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plans are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. CFD encourages residents to ensure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities. If you need new smoke or carbon monoxide detectors, please call CFD at 434-970-3481 and schedule an installation. We are pleased to announce that the restroom facility, that restrooms facilities will be available to the public at York Place, located at 112 West Main Street, beginning November 1. The facilities will be open seven days a week during building hours, which generally are 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily. In addition, we continue to work on a plan to reopen the downtown transit center, which will bring online, bring online restroom facilities at the east end of the mall. We are hoping to make this possible by the end of the year. We hope these additional amenities make visiting the downtown mall a more pleasant experience for all. Special thanks to Chris Engel and the Office of Economic Development and the Charlottesville Economic Development Authority for their work to make this happen. While we are on the subject of the downtown mall, there have been some recent chatter about the city pursuing the takedown of nine trees on the mall. Those trees pose a safety risk, and it is necessary that they be removed and eventually replaced. This is an example of the kind of work that the committee on the downtown mall will remain focused on for some months ahead. This internal group is doing exploratory, doing the exploratory work necessary to identify various priorities for the mall. We intend to come back to council with a request to appoint citizen members to the committee so that the harder work of formulating a list of recommendations can be done. We are focused on preserving the mall for another 50 years. I previously announced that we had initiated a process to hire the city's first emergency management coordinator. That process has concluded, and today I extended the offer to Jeremy Evans. Jeremy is a captain with the Charlottesville Fire Department, and Jeremy, if you are on, please turn on your camera now. Jeremy is a captain with the Charlottesville Fire Department, where he has served for seven years. He is a career first responder with over 24 years in the fire service. Jeremy is promoted to the rank of battalion chief and will report to me as Director of Public Safety. There he is. We're not asking you to say anything, just wave.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yes.
His day-to-day efforts will fall within the portfolio of Deputy City Manager Saunders, and we welcome Jeremy aboard. Also, today I ask Deputy Fire Chief Michael Thomas. Deputy Chief Thomas, please come on the screen. There you are. To take the reins as interim fire chief upon the departure of Chief Hesedine Smith next week. Thomas, while currently in his first 100 days with the Charlottesville Fire Department, he has over 31 years of experience in fire service in the city of Lynchburg, and he has the right perspective on the current status of the department and the need for stabilization. So we are looking forward to his tenure. I was impressed at his comments about his, his view of management, his approach to the fire service. We look forward to working with him over the next, next week. He will assume responsibility of the department at 8:00 AM on Friday, October 21st. And congratulations to him, and let me say that we looked at, interviewed the three deputies in the department. We are fortunate to have three outstanding deputies in the leadership of the department. We want to thank Chief Smith for putting us in the position to, to have successful succession planning as he departs, and we wish him the very best on his next assignment in Pope County, Florida. Thank you, Chief Smith. Also, we have, this is a time we make our financial, quarterly financial report. You've received a memorandum. Chrissy, you want to walk, walk through this, this first quarter?
Sure, yes, sir. I'll share my screen again.
There we go.
So some of this we previewed at 4 o'clock. This is the report that is in your packet, and I'm going to skip forward to the revenue chart. Again, with each quarter, we try to update you on revenue projections as the revenue team meets monthly. We're working on the 24 budget development, as well as monitoring our revenues in the current year. For revenues, we're currently in the first quarter. As of September 30th, we were about 12% in terms of our actuals. Keep in mind that two of our biggest revenue sources, the real estate tax and the personal property tax, those first payments for this fiscal year will be due on, in December, so that is, accounts for why some of the actuals are so low. Again, as we talked about earlier, for those, for anyone who was not on at 4, we are looking to at a revenue surplus at the moment, based on our performance in the first quarter. If everything were to hold true with that, we are looking at roughly a $4 million revenue surplus for FY '23. Couple of things to note here in the changes. The largest increases relate to the real estate tax, which is some based on the penny increase that's catching up with new construction and things that have been billed. Also, personal property, the assessments have continued to come in a little higher, generating some additional revenue over and above budget. Sales and lodging continue to do well, as does meals tax. Again, we know from COVID, those are fairly sensitive revenue sources, depending on how the economy is performing. And with the conversation regarding the national economy, it's anybody's guess if this continues or how it goes. But right now, we're assuming that all is well, and we're moving forward with that. We do, we are showing a, a loss in the vehicle license. That is the decision that council made a couple of weeks ago to do away with the vehicle license fee. The revenue that we are projecting for '23 is just some catch-up of some past due payments that will be rolling in this year. We also have the plastic bag tax. Again, we're not really projecting any money for that at this point. You have an item on your agenda later tonight for a small amount of money that is expected to come in. But as you know from that item, that will be used to get things underway, so we're not counting anything at this moment on that one. All that to say, again, we're looking at about a $4 million surplus, which is just under 2% of our total budget, which was adopted at just over $212 million. So we will continue to monitor that as we go along. On the expenditure side, that is not quite as easy to project as we know that our expenditures are a little bit harder because we have large expenses in the general fund, that some of those happen as big lump sums, such as transfers to the Capital Projects Fund, transfers to debt service. And so right now, for the expenditure side, as luck would have it, we're about, we're at about 25%, which is where we would expect for the first quarter. I'll tell you, though, I think that's probably luck that makes it for a nice presentation. But we are tracking expenditures, and they seem to be on track. I do want to just take this opportunity to remind you about the Budget Explorer that is on the city's budget webpage. There are two tabs here, both the quarterly revenues, as well as the quarterly expenditures. On both of those, you have the ability to drill down by department and take a look at the line items, as well as a comparison of the '22 to '23 budget. And with that, I'm going to turn this part of the report over to our treasurer, Mr. Randimer.
Great. Thank you so much, Chrissy. I just have a couple slides to share. All right. So I just wanted to give a quick quarterly update on the city's investment portfolio. So we did this a few months ago, but just to kind of recap, the city's portfolio is governed by an investment policy statement that we drafted along with our investment advisor. And the policy sort of dictates how we invest general fund assets, as well as non-general fund. And the primary goals of the policy are to maximize safety, liquidity, and yield. So first of all, we're trying to protect the principal balance of the city's portfolio, have enough liquidity to meet the city's expenditures when they're required. And then, thirdly, the third goal there is to maximize the yield when possible. So two things I wanted to point out on this slide here. This is just the monthly cash balance over the last year, broken down by investment type. So the, the top section that you see on there is the cash and money market, which, you know, for a while was a pretty significant portion of our portfolio, just based on the interest rate that we were able to get compared to securities out on the open market. It just was not quite as attractive over the last year until about May or June. And so the first thing that I wanted to point out was the obvious spike in inflows that we received in June. And that's not uncommon for local governments who build real estate and personal property semiannually. So those came in in June, and that spike was a little higher than it has been in the past for a couple of reasons. As, as Chrissy pointed out, both increased assessments, as well as an increased tax rate, really makes that jump out. But as you can see, a lot of that was either spent with first-quarter appropriations or shifted into other more attractive investments. So that's one of the things that we've been focusing on, on the last three months, and continue to do so with our investment manager, is looking for those opportunities where we can earn more interest. And you may have noticed on, on Chrissy's presentation that we were able to almost double the estimate for interest earnings in FY '23, based on just kind of where yields are right now. So we've shifted more funds into the managed portfolio. So we've shifted more funds into the managed portfolio as well as into the investment pool, which is run by the state. That's the third section there, the gray section you can see is, you know, until June, we really didn't have any money in those state local government pools, and now we have a significant balance there, and we're able to access those funds same day. So it's really a great opportunity at the moment. So on this slide, just giving a breakdown of the portfolio composition, this is similar to what you saw before, although there have been some minor changes, but primarily when we're looking at the managed portfolio, the majority of that is going to be in U.S. Treasury securities as well as federal agencies, and then just some smaller allocations to corporate notes and commercial paper. Those will all be in names, highly rated names that you've heard of and are familiar with, like Amazon or Berkshire Hathaway, or Intel, Microsoft, Apple, things like that. That's the breakdown of the managed portfolio at the moment. And then the last slide here, just two charts to share with you. The first on the left just says the maturity breakdown of the managed portfolio, and just wanted to highlight here that as rates are rising, we're obviously looking to reinvest those maturities in higher interest-earning securities. And we have about a third of the portfolio rolling over in the next 12 months, so we've been working with our manager to make sure that we have funds available to take advantage of those higher rates, and we're starting to do that. On the right, of course, you can see just the dramatic increase in investment yields that we've experienced over the last 12 months. If you went back to October of 2021, those securities were operating about 10 basis points, and now we're seeing one-year yields around 4.5% for a one-year security, Treasury security. And the overnight rates that we're able to get right now are in excess of 3%. So definitely a dramatic increase and something that we're looking to take advantage of as much as we can and hopefully help the budget a little bit in FY '23 and FY '24. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and turn it back over to Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Jason. And just to remind council that in November, probably first meeting in December, we'll come back with the annual audit for the 2022 fiscal year, and that will give us a clear indication of where we landed. And I think it's going to be a little bit more than we talked about earlier, but we'll just have to wait and see till we get the real numbers. Thank you very much. Those are all of the comments from the city manager's report.
Thank you. Any councilors have any questions for the city manager about any of that?
Question for the treasurer's report. I know before any of us were on council several years ago, the city voted on the divestment from fossil fuels. Could you talk in more detail on whatever became of that?
Yeah, that discussion sort of had two parts to it. One was related to the presentation tonight, which would be on the city's operating funds. And at that point, we decided to fully divest and exclude any investment opportunities related to fossil fuels from operating funds. And when we did that, I think there was one security, I think it was in Chevron, actually, that we divested from and replaced it at that point. And we continue to maintain that posture with our investment manager. They're aware of that. They have that hardcoded into their system, so they're not able to purchase those securities. And additionally, we approve every purchase that they make, so there's a secondary review there as well. So that has not been an issue in the operating portfolio. The second half of that discussion related to the city's retirement plan and retirement fund. And one of the things that we did for employees in the defined contribution plan was add an investment option that would allow them to invest in a S&amp;P index fund that did not include fossil fuels, if that was an option that they would like to have. So we added that to the fund lineup pretty quickly after that discussion commenced. And then since that time, over the next nine to 12 months or so, the Retirement Commission engaged with our investment advisor and the individual fund managers to make individual determinations on a fund-by-fund basis on the appropriateness of divestment. And for the most part, we did incorporate language in each of those investment policy statements with those managers that we would like them to do that when there were other viable alternatives available. And so we did. A significant portion of the portfolio was divested from energy-related fossil fuel companies in those accounts that were separately managed. Now, there were a few that were commingled with other investors, and we didn't quite have as much freedom in the way that we handled those, but we did have conversations with each of those managers and expressed, you know, our desire to sort of move in that direction. But for the most part, I think, you know, over 70 or 80% of the portfolio, we were able to accomplish the goals that we had set out, and I think we did it in a pretty balanced approach over a long period of time. So that's where we are currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to bring up something I know everyone's working on and is concerned about, but again, so I guess yesterday, there was additional violence on Hardy Drive, multiple shots, a building being struck, no injuries were reported, but I just want to make sure we're not forgetting that, about that part of our community, that consistently, this is something that happens. I know it's complicated, but I just don't want us to lose sight of the fact that we have vulnerable people there that need to be protected.
Absolutely. As I reported, at our last council meeting, the Charlottesville Police Department is focused on this uptick in incidents in our community and constantly working on a plan to keep our citizens safe. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So let's turn next to Community Matters. There were no pre-registered speakers, so we have 16 open speaker slots for Community Matters. Each speaker, excuse me, will have up to three minutes to speak. Virtual attendees wishing to speak may select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to be placed in the speaker queue. If you've joined by phone and wish to speak during Community Matters, please press star nine. In-person attendees may raise your hands to be recognized and will alternate with virtual speakers. There will be an additional public comment section at the end of the meeting. First, is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself. Yes, please.
Anthony Harrow. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Just simply wanted to express appreciation for item number 19, being proposed, which is ARPA money to support emergency shelter operations at Premier Circle. Wanted to give an update. A similar proposal is planned to go in front of county council for the same amount of money to support operations. I just wanted to update you all with that for November 2nd. I'll be here as well in case you have more questions later when that item is discussed, so just wanted to put that forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrow.
Thank you.
So is there anybody online who would like to speak to us?
Yes, Mayor Snook. Our first raised hand will be Tanisha Hudson.
All right, Ms. Hudson.
Good evening. First and foremost, I want to thank city manager, Mr. Rogers, for announcing the first black deputy chief, who will now be the acting interim chief. And shout out to Chief Hesedine Smith. He's done some amazing work. This is our first ever black deputy chief, now turning into an interim chief. And also Lance Blakely is our first ever black battalion chief. You all failed to mention that last council meeting or the council meeting before, because I wasn't on the first one this month, but I just wanted to bring awareness to that. That's a historical landmark that has never happened in the city. And things like that, you have to say as loudly as you like to say other things when you promote other people. Yeah, they mentioned, you did mention them last meeting, I think, but I said something in the meeting before. You should have mentioned it in the meeting before. So anyway, aside from that, Brian Pinkston, you brought up the balance at Hardy Drive. Balance is up in America. And while you all did do a pay raise, I want you to know that your pay raise for your police officers, you are not competing with the neighboring departments. So if you're really focused on your police being able to do the work, then you know that you only have four or five officers working at night, which means that there's not a lot that you're going to start with four or five officers working at night. And I don't believe in overpolicing, but I do believe in having a full staff. Now, two years ago, let you all tell it, you particularly, Lloyd Snook, you said a lot of people was going to leave because of Brackney. Well, Brackney been out of the picture, and you still down on your police officers. She was not your reason. So I hate to have to revisit the havoc and the chaos and the BS, but the reality is, Brackney was not your issue. Money was your issue, and money will continue to be your issue with keeping the city of Charlottesville fully staffed. And that's not just your police department, your bus drivers, all of your positions, your neighboring entities are paying more. They're paying a lot more. So again, while you did something slight, you could definitely do better. Again, shout out to Chief Hesedine Smith. Thank you for your service. Thank you for blessing Charlottesville. We may never see it again once you leave. To this level, he had the most female firefighters ever hired in any class. These are things you should be talking about instead of, you know, going after people and being snakes and pushing people out of color. So thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Back in, Ms. Parker, do you wish? I don't mean to pick on you, but you're the only other person here, so.
Yes. Good afternoon. Rosia Parker. I'm very saddened that Mr. Hans Aguilar has now left. That was a lot of work put into that PCOB, which started off as the PCRB. It's like, what is it really going to take for the representation of the people? For the people to really be here to do the work that was really put in, that the people put in? It's been five years that we put this work in, talking to state and legislation. Now, the work that we put in is now world, is now widespread through Virginia, that they can have a police civilian review board. It's like, when is Charlottesville going to be held accountable for their actions? Everybody keeps saying that, the police are now saying that Charlottesville got the wrong bid on 2017. No, you didn't get the wrong bid on 2017. Historically, up till 2017, and now and after, I mean, it's time to take accountability. Y'all say us as activists, we become activists when we have a passion for something that is wrong, but we tend to be looked down upon when it's something that needs to be spoken upon when it comes to the community. And it's like, we fought for that, and now he's gone. And he came from one of the first places that helped establish this. Still, I haven't heard from months ago about, when I was talking about these streets that are so dangerous for these cars, that what's once two-way streets are now one-way streets. I haven't heard anything back on that, and it's very dangerous. And then this work that these, the city is doing on our streets, I mean, it's tearing our cars up. They're leaving big cement blocks in the middle of the slabs in the street. As far as Hardy Drive, Hardy Drive hasn't been having any issues with the police or any other issues with shootouts until they start mixing different communities up here lately. And then you've got other organizations that are out here that are making different things happen. So crime is everywhere, but the only way that you're going to make things work is if you put things in place for people to have something to do in Charlottesville, especially people of color. You might can have less crime here. You may can have less different things here if people was to ever come together as organizations and do what they're supposed to do in the city of Charlottesville, because Charlottesville is not exempt as for what is about to come. I'm tired of forewarning, 17 years I've been at this table telling Charlottesville this, it's going to get worse, but I hope y'all put things in place where it could be better.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Do we have anyone else online?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
All right, so that was our final speaker for Community Matters. As I said, there will be another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. Let's now move on to the action item portion of the agenda, and the first action item deals with a public utility easement at 209 Maury Avenue. Ms. Robertson, are you presenting this? Can't hear you.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Let me get to my points. So as noted in your agenda materials, there is a developer by the name of FMC Investments LLC that is the owner of three lots at the intersection of Stadium Road and Maury Avenue. Previously, these lots were platted and a sanitary sewer easement was included across a number of the lots. As part of the development process, the current developer is going to be constructing a new sewer line in a different location than the one that was established previously. And in your materials, there is an easement and boundary line adjustment plat that shows the location of the proposed new sewer line. And so the request before you tonight by the developer is that you vacate the existing established easement, and that the vacation will be conditioned upon acceptance of a new sewer line in the location shown on the attached plat as the new 20-foot public utility easement. And so this will allow, by going ahead and approving the vacation, you'll allow the developer to proceed with various financing applications and to proceed with the development, but the actual vacation will not take effect until there is a new sewer line constructed within the new easement in the location shown within your materials. So everyone on staff and in the engineering department, the utilities engineering staff have reviewed this request and have joined in the recommendation for approval, and so we ask that city council adopt this resolution, I'm sorry, this ordinance vacating the existing public utility easement.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Councilors, any clarifying questions? This is actually a public hearing, so if there is anyone who would like to speak on this matter, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room here who would like to speak on this matter? Okay. Is there anybody online who would like to speak on the matter of this public utility easement on Maury Avenue?
Mayor Snook, I see no raised hands.
All right. So the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I guess to me, it just seems pretty straightforward.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Sure. I would move to... I'm trying to find it, too.
I think that we fell down on our duties and did not give you a recommended motion, but you can craft one easily by using the title of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Page 65.
I would move to approve an ordinance vacating an existing public utility easements on lots identified on City Tax Map 17. I'll just read the whole thing. As follows, 18.4, 18.5, and 18.6, and accepting a dedication of 0.018 acre of additional public street right-of-way along Stadium Road.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote, please?
Counselor McGill?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five-nothing. Thank you, that is taken care of. Next item on the agenda, an ordinance to amend, reordain, and reenact the Section fourteen dash nineteen of the City Code to clarify the businesses subject to taxation at the rate specified within subclassification H of Section fourteen nineteen. Mr. Divers?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've got a few things on your agenda tonight. I'm trying to kill a number of birds with one stone, so to speak. The first one that you have is to address the results of the recent Supreme Court case that, in my opinion, curiously found a deficiency in our business license ordinance. And so this measure attempts, it will address it. Essentially, the court found that our ordinance did not sufficiently cover non-service-oriented businesses. And so this simply addresses it. It uses language from the state code to do it. And then it also specifically creates a category for writers and authors, which was the, the focus of the case. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Okay, counselors, have any questions? This time, we have a, a motion suggested for us on page sixty-eight. Anyone like to make it?
I would move to approve the ordinance to amend, reordain, and reenact Section fourteen dash nineteen of the City Code to clarify the businesses subject to taxation at the rate specified within subclassification H of Section fourteen dash nineteen, and also that City Council adopt the ordinance by four-fifths vote effective on this first reading, waiving the requirement for a second reading as allowed by City Code Section two dash nine seven.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Thomas, take the vote, please.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Right, that motion passes five-nothing. Next item, also Mr. Divers, dealing with the transient occupancy tax to incorporate various state legislative changes.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's basically it. You hit the nail on the head. The state, the General Assembly, for the last two years has made some significant changes to provisions of sales tax and local transient occupancy tax to try to address various issues raised by online travel agencies and online travel platforms like Airbnb and others. We attempted to address this last year after the 2021 session. Got partway there, and then they, they, you know, met again in 2022 and made some further changes. And so we're, we're going along and updating our code to address all of those. That's the biggest thing that is dealt with here. We're also doing some cleanup that we should have done last year to clarify that the entirety of a charge to, to stay in a hotel or a B and B or an Airbnb or something like that is subject to the transient occupancy tax. That was not always the case. It used to be that only the portion of the charge that was dedicated to, you know, the lodging itself was subject to the transient occupancy tax. But the change in state, the changes in state code in the last two years have made it very, very clear that all ancillary charges are also subject to sales tax and transient occupancy tax. So we, we're trying to, to clarify some language in there that we had mistakenly left from sort of the prior regime, I guess, or the, the prior way of thinking.
Would that mean that, like, cleaning fees for Airbnb would be taxable?
Yes, and you may have seen this, if you stayed in Airbnb or another things, what, one way that, that hosts were getting out of paying the lodging tax is they would, the actual charge for the room itself would be miniscule, but the cleaning fees and the pet fees and the other things were astronomical. And so under the, you know, the formal way of thinking, those were not subject to tax. Well, the General Assembly changed that, so it's all subject to tax. And the last little change here is, in anticipation of the University of Virginia opening a hotel in town, there was a curious little exemption in the local code that exempted stays in educational institutions. And so, sort of, I don't, I don't know that anybody would try to take advantage of that, but if there was any effort to interpret that to mean that a stay in a hotel owned by an educational institution might somehow be exempt, we thought we should go ahead and clarify that to, to mean explicitly stays in dormitories, which I think was the original intent of that language when, when the transient occupancy tax ordinance was passed, however long ago it was passed.
Okay. Other questions, folks?
Yeah, Mr. Divers, always a pleasure.
Likewise.
Yeah. Wondering, do you have any sense of, with this, these changes, what additional revenue might come out of this, or is that just kind of?
Not, not yet. I mean, I, I think we'll see some more. The, part of the urgency with having you guys pass this thing on one reading is the, the online intermediaries began collecting tax for their hosts starting on October first. And so we'll see those remittances November twentieth. So we'll have a better idea of what it's gonna look like then. There's a number of issues of, you know, accountability and whether or not they're gonna give us the data that the state ordinance requires them to give us. But we, you know, we think we will see some more money, we just don't know how much.
Okay, thank you.
Similarly, yeah, I guess just practically in terms of what this changed for the city, I guess it would boil down to UVA, when they build a hotel, that wouldn't be tax exempted. And then two, there's more that the city can tax on Airbnbs and other.
Yeah, in a nutshell, I, I don't think, you know, this little change to the, to this exemption to, to clarify dorms, I don't know if that was ever gonna hold anything up. It was just sort of a precaution we wanted to take. Our position is that the lodging tax, I mean, yeah, transient occupancy tax will be applicable to stays in that hotel when it's built.
Okay, yeah. Well, and I guess they could always just buy it with the UVA Foundation anyway, but.
Still gonna be subject to transient occupancy.
Okay, that's true, just real estate tax off the rules.
You made his day, Mr. Divers.
But, yeah, but besides those things, is there anything practically that would change in terms of how the city is collecting taxes on Airbnbs, which I think has really been?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's nothing that this ordinance changes. It's what the state, what the state code changes have, have done and that this ordinance is, is simply adopting. Starting on October first, all of the online intermediaries began collecting taxes for their hosts. Essentially, what the state ordinance, what the state code says is that if a, whoever facilitates the transaction and, and collects the money from the customer is responsible for remitting, for collecting and remitting the tax, either the sales tax to the state or the transient occupancy tax to the locality. And so that's a little bit different than what we had before. At the end of 2021, they kind of went halfway there, and some of the online intermediaries were doing that in a roundabout fashion. But Airbnb had been somehow exempted from that. They were not, they were not part of that. The 2022 legislation corrected that. The 2021 legislation created a kind of confusing scheme for how those intermediaries were to remit the taxes if the stays were at a hotel. They had to collect, I'm, I'm getting in the weeds on this, but they had to collect the portion of the tax that was attributable to their markup, and then they would send that to the locality and, or the sales tax to the locality or the lodging tax, excuse me, vice versa, the sales tax to the state, the lodging tax to the locality. The rest of the tax that they collected, they had to send to the hotel, and then the hotel had to do that same thing. So it was very confusing and convoluted. So the legislation that passed in 2022 fixed that.
Okay, no, yeah, I appreciate, I guess, what I'm getting at is, we, I know we've had discussions about those, just like non-compliant Airbnbs, which are kind of operating in the shadows and not being taxed, and that's been a concern. I'll admit, I haven't followed the state legislation too closely. You know, with all those changes you mentioned, does that kind of address that issue in any meaningful way? Or is that gonna have to be something else we work on later on?
It, it, we can address it if the online intermediaries provide the data that the state legislation says they're supposed to provide. But I'll be perfectly frank with you, Airbnb has already said they're gonna refuse. The, the new state legislation says that the online intermediaries, when they remit the tax, they're supposed to give, on a monthly basis, they're supposed to give the localities a list of addresses and gross receipts tied to those addresses. We don't think that's asking too much. That's act, frankly, that's less than we ask, you know, hotels and, and people who are remitting on their own. Airbnb has already said they're not gonna do it, even though they helped negotiate the legislation at the General Assembly. So if we get the list, if we get the addresses, you know, we'll have the transient occupancy tax, or at least we'll have what they say they owe us. You know, we won't have any way to check it. If they give us the list and, and the, and the gross receipts, you know, we can, we can audit it, we can check behind them. And then we can also see who needs a business license, and we can see who needs a, a home state permit. But, but in the absence of those things, we won't be able to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just said, or who's breaking zoning code.
Sure. That's, that's for Reed Broadhead.
Well, that, no, thank you, that's all, that's all very helpful. And I guess we'll just kind of have to see what happens and go, go from there.
We're, I mean, I'll be honest with you, we're already gearing up for fight at the General Assembly over this, because we're sure Airbnb's gonna go back and try to reneg on the agreement that was struck at the General Assembly last year. And, and this may be something for your legislative packet when the time comes.
Yeah, no, all very helpful, that, that's all I've got.
Yeah, so I just had a quick follow-up to, to that, and I, I think it was last budget I asked about this. And because one of the things that Brian probably heard it too when we were campaigning is that, you know, from neighbors that, you know, were concerned that several vehicles a week would come in and out because of Airbnb, and, and they didn't like it. And, and when I asked about it, I thought one of the issues was a capacity issue, because what we were told is like, well, why can't you just Google or go to Airbnb, and you see their homes and addresses and things like that, that's, that's available? And say, well, do they have a business or, are, are they collecting? And so I know that you don't have the capacity right now to do it. I guess we can see what we would get, what that position would be charged. And I know it's not popular or anything like that, but it's, it's, it's our law. It's what we have in place. So anyway, that's a larger, bigger discussion, and I want to go down this hole right now. But it's something I think we do need to decide if we're going to address it or not, because I know it's a concern of a lot of residents that their neighborhood, the people, it's not everywhere, but they simply purchase a home for Airbnb.
Right.
Business.
It, it, there, I, there are two things I would, I would point out, and you're absolutely right. I, I think you were, I think you were suggesting that it's a staffing issue. Right now, I mean, you've got one guy policing this, Reed Broadhead. And it's very, very difficult of, for one person to do it. He operates on complaints, there are not many complaints. For as many people who, as, who, who do complain about it, sort of privately, or, you know, or who will talk to you guys about it, they're not, not a lot of folks are complaining to, to NDS. But it is definitely a staffing issue for those folks. I mean, we, I think we, we have a little bit more capacity to, to track down the business licenses and do those sorts of things. And then, you know, we communicate back and forth with the NDS, with Reed. But, you know, if there are bad actors to be found and, you know, brought to justice, I guess is. There's one guy, you know, and, and he's up to his eyeballs.
Okay. So are we ready for a motion on this ordinance?
Sure. I move the ordinance to amend, reordain, and reenact Chapter thirty, Article nine of the City Code Transit Occupancy Tax to incorporate state legislative changes pertaining to collection of tax revenues from lodging intermediaries and to update definitions of terms used in Article nine, and the requirement for a second reading is waived. Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion, including the waiver of the second reading? Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote, please?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that motion also passes five-zero. And finally, on a roll with Mr. Divers, to amend, reordain, and reenact the cigarette tax.
Yes, sir, another sexy-sounding ordinance. Yeah, last fall, you all voted to join the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board. You appointed me as the city's representative on that. But we have not had a chance to bring to you all an updated ordinance. Basically, our ordinance, as it exists now, still vests those authorities with the Treasurer's Office, and, you know, the stamping is done by the Treasurer, and folks are still buying stamps. Well, that hasn't, you know, that, that's, that's not happening anymore. It's now going under the auspices of the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board, which has been functioning now for quite a number of months. The, the ordinance that's before you is essentially boilerplate ordinance that was promulgated to all of the member localities, and it's based on an ordinance that the Northern Virginia Cigarette Tax Board has used for years and years and years. And so it just kind of dots the i's, crosses the t's of what was started last fall.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Yes, I move the ordinance to amend, reordain, and reenact Chapter thirty, Article seventeen of the City Code cigarette tax to reflect the city's membership in the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
And is this one that we're also seeking to dispense with a second reading on?
Um, this one is, we have, this one is not as urgent as the others, but.
It says one reading.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Okay.
Ms. Robertson to clarify?
Thank you, pardon?
Ms. Robertson?
I'd rather Ms. Robertson clarify that.
Okay.
Yes, I am trying to look in the materials here.
I think, I think, go ahead.
If the, if the motion says first reading and you adopt it with four out of, at least four out of five votes, that will be fine. If you'd like to move this one to a second reading, you do not have to use, you do not, this one's not as urgent as Mr. Diver said.
Right, I think we just had so many coming in, and they needed one reading. I think this one just got it.
We just thought it would be easier to do them all as part of a package at once.
Why don't we go ahead and?
I'm fine with it.
Give it and dispose of it? Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and have a vote on the first reading, and if it passes with at least four votes, then we don't need a second reading. Okay, so we have a motion, and I don't remember, was there a second?
One second.
One seconded, okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
All right, and finally, that passes five-nothing. Finally, to amend, reordain, and reenact the Real Estate Tax Relief Program for Elderly and Disabled Persons, Mr. Divers again.
Lucky y'all. So if you'll recall, earlier this year, before we found it necessary to make the changes that we did to the CHAP program, my, my intention was to merge the CHAP program with the Real Estate Tax Relief Program to get their parameters as close as I could, you know, so just to kind of alleviate a lot of confusion. So we obviously cannot merge those programs, but this kind of closes the loop on that and brings the Real Estate Tax Relief Program as close to in line with CHAP as we can. I'm proposing a number of things here, some of which are to simplify things. I'm proposing a number of things here, some of which are to simplify things, some of which are to, like I said, create parity with the CHAP program, and some of them are just good ideas that are long overdue. One of, the first thing I'm proposing is that we eliminate the net worth component for real estate tax relief. Net worth is not something that we're required to, to track for purposes of real estate tax relief for elderly and disabled. One of the reasons that I would really like to see it go away is because we have another program, we have the CHAP program, that does not require a, a net worth look. And, and so it's just, it's sort of unfair to have the elderly and disabled folks have to come in, and we have to pour through their net worth documents and their bank accounts and all that sort of stuff. Whereas if they just wait a little bit later in the year and apply for CHAP, they don't have to do that. So, you know, that, that's, that's one reason. Along with that, if we eliminate the net worth component, we need to require that an applicant cannot own any other real estate, because obviously that would be the biggest net worth factor for most people that would, that would exclude, exclude their participation in the program as it exists now. So if you do one, you really need to do the other. Currently, real estate tax relief allows folks to have other real estate, but that real estate counts as part of their net worth. So if it's worth very much at all, they don't qualify. So we don't really want to see that change. We want to increase the income threshold to $60,000, which would, would be parity with CHAP program. The way we do that is I've proposed a mechanism that pegs eligibility to certain percentages of median family income, as is promulgated by HUD in their, what's the, the, the source we use? It's, it's from the Fair Market Rents source. Essentially, we would be using the HUD number for median family income, and we would have four tiers of eligibility that would be based on, you know, percentage of that number, or what a person's income is as a percentage of that number. The benefit, and the, the real, to me, personally, being selfish, the benefit of that is that as we go into the budget cycle every year, we kind of have an idea of what the limits are supposed to be, and we don't have to engage in the, the horse trading that we've done over the last several years of, well, what if we, you know, what if we made the income here, or what if we made the second tier here, or the third tier here, which ties up a lot of time. If we just have a formula that we can use and follow every year, you know, that, to me, that, that, that's very beneficial. Our, our annual adjustments would be based on that formula then, and so it would be, you know, easy to follow. We would begin, we would change our income calculations to, to mirror those in the CHAP program, where we use federal adjusted gross income. Currently, in the real estate program for elderly and disabled, we have to look at every single item of income. So that means, you know, we're looking at TANF, we're looking at, you know, food stamps, we're looking at, I mean, everything that a person has coming in, whether or not it's, it's taxable, you know, for federal income tax purposes. CHAP folks don't have to do that. They can just show us their 1040. And so we would like to do that as well. We think that that, that's fair. And then the last one is, we would like to go to a three-year application cycle with an annual certification. So in other words, an applicant does not have to come in and provide their income data every, every year, they could provide that data every three years, but then in the, in the intervening years, they would still need to provide us a certification that their circumstances hadn't changed sufficiently to, to alter their eligibility. That's allowed by state code, and so we think we'd like to do that. And then there's a couple of housekeeping items in here that we want to do. Well, one was a result of an oversight of mine. The last time you folks made a change to real estate tax relief, you eliminated the requirement that a signed notarized affidavit would be required. I failed to submit the correct memo to the clerk at the time, and so then that never got updated in the, the, the code itself. So we want to go ahead and correct that. Let's see here. We'd like to remove the, the, the reference to a deferral of taxes. Currently, state, our, our city code allows for a deferral program. Nobody takes advantage of it. Nobody will ever take advantage of it as long as an exemption program exists. I've spelled out, you know, the reasons why I think that's the case in the memo. I can go over them if you want. So we'd like to just, to strike that. It doesn't make sense to keep it there if nobody's ever going to do it. There's another change we want to make, that if a person who has, if, if an applicant is unable to apply by the deadline, and they have a medical reason or medical excuse, currently, under the existing provisions of the ordinance, they have to provide us with a doctor's note or some sort of medical affidavit, which is kind of ridiculous. We would rather be able to just make that call ourselves. So that's that. And then the last one is, the existing ordinance requires that any changes to the paperwork and to our forms or anything else should be approved by the city manager. You know, frankly, these forms change year to year, and candidly, we've not run those up the flagpole with the city manager's office. I wasn't actually aware until recently that we were supposed to. I don't believe the city manager would be interested in vetting all those documents either, so we'd like to get rid of that provision. Mr. Rogers, I hope I'm not speaking out of school.
You never know. He may have an insatiable curiosity for this sort of thing.
You're fine, Todd. We'll talk later.
All right. Uh, that's, that's it. That's a mouthful. There it is.
Okay. So, councilors, any questions?
No.
Well, let me raise some questions that I had raised with Mr. Divers, and I copied Ms. Robertson on it all, and I got a response from...
Okay, good.
From Todd. Lisa may have had other things to do today. I, I say that sarcastically, because I know she had a lot of other things to do today. So I had a couple of basic issues, and as I was sort of flyspecking the, the ordinance. The first problem is that we, this draft uses slightly different terminology for what I suspect are intended to be the same thing. At one point, it refers to median family income for the SMSA as determined by HUD. And eventually, I think I figured out from, not from the ordinance, but from the memo, that MFI basically equates to the, the AMI figure that we're used to using, although it doesn't say that exactly.
I, I don't know that it does. It, it means what the, I am referring to the, the number that is disseminated by HUD, and I, there's, and there's one of the items, one of the attachments in your, in your, in your packet, is the, is just a printout of what they put out every year. I think if you go online and you find where that comes from, I think that is, they've taken an average of the ACS surveys for five years in a row, and then they've applied a, an inflation variable to that, to get that number. But the point is, that number is published every year, and that's the number that we would look at, and we would take our percentages from that. It doesn't matter what we use, we, we just need something that looks at incomes in Charlottesville, and then, you know, we, we create our structure from there. So I, you know, if there's something better, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to use it, but that's just an easily reproducible method and a number that I can look up every single year when I come back to you and, you know.
Well, I mean, and I, I'm not arguing for a particular formulation, but when I went looking for that number last night, and I Googled all kinds of different combinations, I never found the combination that got me to where your memo got you, which was what prompted my, my email to you at, I don't know, whatever it was, 2:00 in the morning or something. And, but what I saw was places where it essentially equated MFI to the AMI figure, and of course, AMI is supposed to be for a family of a particular size typically, and so we talked about the $111,200, which is the same number you use for the MFI, that's the same number we're used to seeing for AMI, but that's specifically AMI for a family of four. And we're not proposing to have any kind of family size requirement in this, in this whole thing. And I, anyway, I, I looked at it, and I, I went around and around and around, and I couldn't find it the way that, I mean, I, I'd love to know your, your secret.
Um, I don't remember how I found it. But I've got it, and I've got it.
And I'm mainly interested, I'm mainly interested in, in being able to define it with sufficient particularity, so that year after year, we know what we're talking about.
If, did, so did you see the link in my response?
Where you say, this is where, and you highlighted that? Yeah, I saw that.
If you, if you click that, that, that's, that's it. That's where it comes from, and then you can drill down within that and, and discover how that number is derived. It's, let's see, it's a, for this year, they take estimates from 2015 to 2019 of the five-year Ameri, what is it, the American Community Survey, prepared by the Census Bureau and used by HUD as the basis for calculating HUD's FY 2022 MFIs. Estimates of MFI for this tabulation are used if they're determined to be statistically reliable. For FY 22, the test of reliability is whether the margin of error for the estimate is less than 50% of the estimate itself. It, it goes on and on, but if you drill down on that, you can see how they derive that number, and they use the same methodology every year.
So I, I guess, I mean, is, it, it strikes me as a pretty amazing coincidence that AMI for a family of four happens to equal median family income for all families.
No, 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 it's not, it's, that's not, that's not AMI for a family of four. That is just AMI.
Well...
Or, or MFI, excuse me.
Right.
That's MFI. That's not, that's not...
I understand that MFI seems to be a, it seems to be independent of family size. It strikes me as extraordinarily coincidental that that number is equal to exactly $111,200, which is exactly the AMI for a family of four, and that's what has me puzzled, because it doesn't seem, I mean, the odds of that being a pure coincidence seem rather improbable.
I, I can't speak to it.
Okay.
I, I can't answer you.
Well, if, if, if that is in fact what that number is, like I say, I don't, I don't care greatly what it is, I care greatly that it be determined and defined specifically enough so that it can be unassailable. The, the second issue, and I guess if that, if that's the case, then hey, we're good. The second case, the second issue deals with the fact that in the same paragraph, you talk about a claimant and an applicant and an owner of the real estate for which a grant is sought, which all apparently mean the same person. And ordinarily, when one is drafting ordinances, one tries to use the same term each time, and if you don't, it makes people wonder whether there's supposed to be a difference. And that was my question to you, was there supposed to be a difference? If not, let's use the same term.
I, I can do that, but what we did today after, and I don't know, I'm, I, I addressed that in the email, I responded, we have added language to the definition section that makes clear that the use of those terms all signify the same thing. I was, I was using an existing ordinance and making some fairly significant changes to it, and so then some of the references, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so, you know, so, yeah, in some cases, I use the old nomenclature, and then in some cases, I use, you know, newer language. But we have added that, so if you go into the civic clerk, or if you look at the latest version of the ordinance, it does address that, and it makes clear, it makes clear that we have added, to the definitions, the second paragraph now states that for purposes of this section, the terms claimant, applicant, and owner of the real estate for which relief is sought are used interchangeably and referred to individuals applying for relief under the provisions of this section.
And then the last thing I mentioned of any significance, other than an extra period, was some confusion on 3098 with paragraph six, and you say, and I, I mentioned, you, referring to parenthetical soup, it was confusion with not enough paren, not enough parentheses or too many parentheses or something.
Well, we used too many parentheses where we should have used a bracket or a couple of brackets, and then a closing parentheses, so I fixed that as well.
So, could my, my question had been whether, if that paragraph was intended to address the question of what happens when title is held by a trust, I should say, of an LLC, or an LLC? And I take it that the intent is that if it's held by John Doe, trustee of the John Doe Revocable Trust, for example, that it's still tax relief available for John Doe?
Correct.
And if John Doe is the beneficiary of, or the owner of an LLC that owns the property, and he otherwise qualifies for tax relief, that's okay also.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, hold on a second. Resides in the dwelling shall not own an interest in any other, no. Well, Section 6 refers to ownership of ancillary real estate. So if someone owns property, either through a trust, as beneficiary of a trust, or as a member of an LLC, then they would not qualify, because then they would, for purposes of this, they would be deemed to own other real estate. That, that's what Section 6 was about. An applicant for exemption under this article shall not own an interest in any...
I say, any other real estate, okay.
Right.
And my, I guess my issue there is that the sentence isn't really completed. There is, there is some other garble to it.
An applicant for exemption under this article, or an applicant's spouse who resides in the dwelling for which relief is sought, shall not own an interest in any other real estate, either personally or by virtue of the applicant's or such spouse's status, as a beneficiary or trustee of a trust of which the real estate is an asset, or by virtue of the applicant's status as a member, single or otherwise, of an LLC or other legal entity of which the real estate is an asset.
Okay, so how have you amended that in whatever version you've, you've, whatever amendment you made today?
There, there was no closing parentheses at the end of the sentence, and then around "or such spouses," there were parentheses and should have been brackets.
Well, you can have parentheses within parentheses. So, so there's supposed to be a parenthesis, a parenthesis after the phrase of which the real estate is an asset?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I, I had assumed in my question to you that the paragraph dealt with the, the issue of whether the applicant could own the property for which the applicant is seeking an exemption as a trust, as a beneficiary of a trust, or as the owner of an LLC. Is that issue addressed anywhere in this ordinance?
Not as the owner, and I believe it is, I've just got to find it. Not as the owner, I believe it is, I've just got to find it. Not as a member of an LLC, because the owner must be a real person. Let me see if I can find it.
I sometimes help clients with estate planning and so on where they end up establishing trusts or LLCs or family limited partnerships or something, and I want to make sure this isn't going to be a problem.
Uh...
Or at least that if it's going to be a problem, that I know about it in advance and we can fix it.
Owner occupied residential real property shall qualify for exemption pursuant to this article where such persons and property comply with the following provisions.
Where are you reading?
Uh, this is section 30-98. The title to the residential property for which exemption is claimed must be held or partially held by the person entitled to claim such exemption as of January 1st of the taxable year for which such exemption is claimed. If the real estate for which exemption is claimed consists of a lot containing a manufactured home, uh, title to both the lot and manufactured home must be held, da-da-da-da-da, or is that even true? Must be 65 years of age or older, permanently and totally disabled, as of December 31st of the year immediately preceding the taxable year. Then we get into household income, and you can't, shall not own interest in any other real estate, either personal or by virtue of the applicant's or such spouse's status, as a beneficiary or trustee of a trust.
Todd, let me, let me jump in here for a second real quick.
Thank you.
So in general, if you would, as a matter of administering the program, you would typically look at sort of the beneficial ownership of the property, so if, if being the single member of an LLC or being the beneficiary under a trust would disqualify you, you would also allow people to participate in the program if the manner in which they hold title to the property is as the single owner within an LLC or the beneficial, the beneficiary under a trust, so long as they met the other income requirement. So it should apply both ways?
Positively and negatively.
Yes, yes, and so, um, that is my, it's my understanding that's how you've applied it over the years.
We have always, I don't know that we've ever had anybody come in with an LLC, but we have, we routinely qualify trusts.
Yeah, so it would be the same issue for a single member LLC if you had one, but you still have to look at the income. I don't, I think that, depending on who the, how many other owners in an LLC, that would be a matter of interpretation and administration of the ordinance, but the general rule is that the applicant has to be the, have title to the property for which they're seeking the relief, and we would just have to, our office would just have to help you look at the facts of a given situation to determine how that title is held and whether it can be, you know, attributed to a specific individual.
The only thing that's confusing me, as I think there is actually a stipulation in the CHAP ordinance that it needs to be a natural person.
But the CHAP is the good old program now.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Yep.
So I don't know...
I think this is fine, I think this paragraph that you all have been discussing really deals with the situation where you have someone who owns multiple real estate holdings. And, you know, I think it's, it's not a situation you're likely to encounter that someone will meet both the income and the property requirements here in Charlottesville and then own multiple real estate holdings in other jurisdictions, or even within the city. I just don't think that's a likelihood, but this provision, this paragraph you've been talking about is meant to ensure that if people own four different real estate holdings and are applying for tax relief on one of them based on these income guidelines, that that's not the, you're making a policy choice that that's not the person you're intending to serve.
So in paragraph six, we're just going to add a parenthesis at the end of "is an asset," period?
Yes, sir, it's been added in the, in Civic Clerk.
Of course, we don't have that.
I think it was probably too late, it was too late to add it to your packet.
And then, and then the other change we talked about, I can't remember what we had said, that you'd already made the change, what was the other change?
Was clarifying that the claimant and applicant, and we're all interchangeable, that's been added as well.
Okay.
And I, we made that change before I responded to your email this morning, or this afternoon.
So in the interest of trying to move things along, and I'm sorry for bogging this down...
Yeah, it was getting bogged down.
Do you, do you folks understand those two changes?
No. I have one clarifying issue. I have one clarifying issue now.
Yes.
So when it comes to, we're coming back to the MFA.
MFI?
Yes. Um, so when you're looking at it, are you, as you can see on the chart provided here, the bold is highlighted under the persons and family four.
Hold on one second, let me get there.
Okay.
We're looking at...
Oh, hold on. I'm sorry, I'm looking at HUD Income Limits Documentation System.
Page 121 of the packet.
So, okay, and, are you there?
Mm-hmm, I am.
Okay, so, now I had it on something else. What was I looking at this? So it says, it highlights the family of four there and gives you in bold the listing...
You're talking about on the HUD document?
Yes.
Yep.
Persons and family, it says very low income, persons and family four, $53,400.
I'm not looking at that, at any of that stuff. I'm looking at the 111,200.
Okay, but median family income, okay, so median family income is according to HUD based on a family of four. Now, I mean, that's what I'm reading at this HUD documentation.
And this is, and what documentation is that?
Uh, Income Limits Documentation System, FY 2022 Income Limit Summary. It's HUD user, um, Charlottesville, Virginia, MSA contains the following, median family income is $111,200, and it's based on the person, I wish I could show you my tablet.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. But this, this $111,000 is based on a four-person household. That's not what we've been using for the CHAP program?
The CHAP program, we don't use anything. We, it's been basically a negotiated number that comes out of the budget cycle, and counselors say, "Well, how about we use this, or how about we use that?"
But what about the income limits? There've been income, there've been income parameters before if somebody qualifies.
For the CHAP program?
Yes.
Yes, they're just kind of spitballed.
But I always thought we used AMI for the CHAP program, that somebody within this AMI...
We, I mean, we did it, we did at some point, um, I'd have to go back and see how we arrived at $55,000 two or three years ago. It was based on, yeah, I mean, it was based on some...
So for a while, the CHAP program was using the, what was referenced in the city's charter, which referred to the definition of persons and families of low and moderate income used by VHDA in their single-family mortgage loan program.
I, if I could interrupt, I apologize. I'm wondering, do we feel like this whole ordinance might profit with two more weeks' worth of conversation, or do we feel like we're close to a resolution? Because we've been talking about this for quite a while. It's very important, I'm not dismissing its importance, but I'm wondering, Mr. Divers, if it might make more sense for Lloyd and Sina, I don't know if Michael had a question to...
I think clearly these are important details.
On this issue, we need to be able, we just need to be able to specifically name the statistical source that we're going to be using. It just needs to be clear what that is, as the mayor pointed out.
Even if it's derived from Ouija boards, as long as it can be determined every year reliably, that's what I'm getting at.
Right, and that's what this is.
But what I'm getting at is it's using a four-person family income for people who are generally one people, one-person families, one or two-person families. I mean, that's what it says on the HUD website that MFI is.
So in that case, it probably would be good to table this and come back on your next meeting, and Mr. Divers and I can follow up to determine what inappropriate source of income limits for a one-person household would be.
Sure. If you guys, in the link that I sent you in the chat, if you drill down, if you drill down for, on the click for more detail button under median family income, you'll see the explanation that I read for how that number was derived, and it doesn't say anything about four-person households.
Well, I, when I asked a moment ago whether people were comfortable even with the two issues that we'd been talking about, and two counselors said no, I think that's a good indication that we ought to come back and look at it in two weeks.
That's fine.
I think we're very close, but I'm always very nervous about asking people to vote for something they haven't actually seen.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I mean, I have loads of confidence in Mr. Divers and Ms. Robertson, but I do think this is, it's like 95% there, but that last 5% probably be good to come back.
So, can we bring it back up again? What's that, be the November, what's that, the 7th?
Unless there's some, like, compelling reason from a schedule perspective that that...
Yeah, that was my question, does this sound like a schedule issue?
Well, I just would rather not go any later than that, because we've got to get the program ready and start getting mail out.
We'll nail down the details November 7th.
Right.
Is that okay, Mr. Divers?
Yeah, we'll make it work.
Okay.
We'll treat it as a second reading, we'll just treat it as if you didn't waive the first reading, yeah.
Good.
That sounds great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and I'm sorry to have bogged us down in such details.
It's okay.
We'll get it right.
All right.
Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Divers. Thank you. Resolution appropriating $700,000 for the Avon Fuel Station Replacement Project. Michael Goddard.
Good evening, Mayor Snook and Council. I'm here to present the appropriation resolution for, like it says, the Avon Fuel Station Replacement. A little background on this project, the city presently has one fuel station out at Avon Yard. That fuel station has been in place for quite a while, and the below-ground fuel storage tank is at the end of its usable life and is becoming uninsurable at this point, so it's pretty important that we do something to resolve that problem. It's also interesting to note that we had an accident out there involving a bus, so now that fuel station is actually not usable. The city is presently using a fuel card system for all of our fueling needs. In the background, we have had since 2019 this project moving forward to try and replace that fuel station with an above-ground tank. There are a lot of benefits of that sort of a tank, not the least of which is the fact that it's easy to decommission, should the time come that we don't need a fueling station anymore. But at present, we are about $700,000 short on the amount of money we need to make that a reality. We have a pretty good idea that we're on the money with that number at this point, because we bid the project multiple times, and that's where it's landed.
Okay.
And a little bit of other background information, I think it has been established by our fleet manager that the payback for this project comparing to our current fuel card system is about seven years. So if we were to stay with the fuel card system, we're going to incur additional costs starting at year seven.
Okay. Questions, councilors?
Yes, hi, Mr. Goddard, it's nice to see you.
Likewise.
Yeah, so please don't take any of these questions as critical, I'm in your line of work, I understand these things happen. Basically, the cost has doubled, is that correct?
That is about right, yes.
Okay, that's fine. And then, how much would it, it seems to me that what's absolutely essential right now is to dig up those old tanks and decontaminate the soil or whatever is required, abate it, and get that neat and tidy, that seems like essential, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And the total cost to do that is 700?
Uh, no, that would be somewhat less. 700 would get us up to the 1.4-ish million dollars that we would need to remove those tanks, put in new tanks and a new fueling system.
Right. My question is, what would the total cost be to just decommission that site?
I do not have that number off the top of my head, but I believe it would be somewhere in the $300,000 range, but don't quote me on that.
Okay, so if we were to just spend $300,000, we would not spend a million, it sounds like, is that correct? If we were to rely on Tiger Fuel or whomever quarrels to do our fueling?
Correct.
What, the seven-year payback that you were talking about, was that for the million dollars or was that for the 700,000?
That's for the whole project. So your payback, if we were to just do the close down, yeah, much, much longer than...
Is, are there any opportunities to partner with a county with their fuel system out? I mean, you're in the same area, right? Could we, is there a way, and this may be beyond like your, this may be on what is pertinent to your job description, maybe this is something for Sam Sanders, but I don't know, we're talking about, this is a million dollars we might could forego in costs to use on something else. I understand that it, I mean, if it's essential, it's essential, and I'm committed to doing that, but I don't know, maybe we could bring in Mr. Vandiver at this point, but if you invested that money somehow, maybe your payback would be even better, but, or not as good. I guess my point is to the city manager's office, is this like an essential thing that we have to have to function as a city, or is there another way to do it? Because this is a million dollars that we're talking about.
Councilor.
Sir.
We have a lot of vehicles.
Understood.
Fuel is required.
Understood.
This particular tank is essential to our operations. What we are doing now, though we are supporting the local economy, is costing us more money than, and over time, it... we are supporting the local economy, is costing us more money than, and over time, it's, as gas keeps going, the price of gas keeps going up, it's going to cost us more. So replacing this tank, we see as an operational necessity.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, council?
Yeah, I mean, I'd still be interested from Mr. Vandiver afterwards to understand the payback.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a, here on first of two readings. Do we want to continue this to the November 7th meeting for the second reading?
Yeah. I'm all right with that.
Okay. Do we want to continue to the consent agenda, or do we want to talk about it more?
I guess the consent agenda's fine. I would, though, just appreciate from Mr. Sanders and Mr. Rogers, some more explanation, maybe even a site visit.
And councillor Pacey, if you wanted to discuss it more, I don't know if there's really an opportunity to save money here, but I'm happy to discuss it, because I'm always down for ways to not spend a million dollars.
Particularly on gasoline.
Yeah. But, you know, I acknowledge there may not be that opportunity there, but if you want to, I'm happy to continue the discussion.
Okay.
I mean, does it hurt us to not put it on the consent agenda? I mean, it doesn't slow things down.
Or we could put it on the consent agenda, and if there's something that develops in the next two weeks, can take it off.
All right. I'm fine with consent agenda.
Yeah, I think that in the future, you know, we won't need this, but we are not at the position there where most of our cars are electric or natural.
Right. Okay, so we have agreement, second reading on the consent agenda, subject to perhaps pulling it if something develops. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Goddard.
Sounds good. And in the meantime, if anybody does want a site visit, I'm happy to help out with that.
Yeah, I would. I'd like that.
Okay. Next, Dogwood Housing Loan Extension. Mr. Sanders?
Good evening, councilors. This is an item on your agenda, which is basically being presented as a request to extend. In 2007, council at that time extended a loan in the amount of $850,000 for the acquisition of 57 residential units to be maintained as rental properties. They were purchased by Woodard Properties LLC, who's been maintaining the properties ever since. They have come back to you on multiple occasions now to extend for five-year terms, and their current agreement expires at the end of this month. The request is to extend it for another five-year period, following the same terms as the prior agreement, with the arrangements in place to carry forward regarding affordability prescriptions up to 80% AMI in some instances, but also making sure that we can provide opportunities for holders of housing choice vouchers to be able to make it into these properties and be sustained over time. There's a lot of backstory there that was provided to you in the form of discussion for the item, but since we're simply just asking for a five-year renewal of the agreement, the goal would be to preserve this series of affordable housing at the current agreement as initiated by council at that time.
Okay. Council, have any clarifying questions?
Yeah, just, I think that the notion would be to substitute the motion that's in the packet with a new motion.
Right, slightly different wording.
Slightly different wording. But we can do that after discussion.
Sure. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Okay, so if we want to move forward, then we would first need to have a motion to substitute a different resolution.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
All right.
I move to substitute for the resolution with our agenda packet the following: Be it resolved by the council of the City of Charlottesville that the Affordable Housing Loan Agreement with Dogwood Properties is extended through October 31, 2027, under the same terms as the existing loan agreement.
Okay, so we have a motion for substitution. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. In discussion? Ms. Thomas, would you call a vote on the motion for substitution?
Councillor McGill?
Yes.
Councillor Payne?
Yes.
Councillor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
All right, that passes 5-0. We will now vote on the substituted resolution. Question is now on the resolution, be it resolved by council, basically under the same terms as the existing loan agreement, is the operative language here. So, that's the resolution we are now to be voting on. Is there a motion on that?
I move that resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Thomas?
Councillor McGill?
Yes.
Councillor Payne?
Yes.
Councillor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
All right, that also passes 5-0, and the loan is extended. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Next item, Approving Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 Guidelines. Ms. Robertson?
All right. Councilors, for some time now, the city council and city manager's office and staff have been talking about enacting guidelines to implement a law or procedure that was established by the General Assembly back in 2002. It's called the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act. Under the act, the General Assembly conferred upon local entities such as the City of Charlottesville, a process by which major construction projects, major improvements to real estate, could be conducted through a competitive process that is more flexible and less prescriptive than the Public Procurement Act. And in the agenda memo, I've listed just a handful of the types of projects that other localities have completed using what's called a PPEA process. It is generally believed that if done correctly, and if done using the flexible process offered by the act, a major construction project can achieve certain efficiencies in cost and scheduling that aren't typically possible using a traditional procurement process. The other thing that I will note is that whether or not the city is itself paying for a project, or whether or not the city is attempting to partner with someone who is a for-profit entity or a nonprofit entity, there are certain types of projects and contractual agreements that need to go through some type of competitive process, whether it's under the PPEA or under traditional procurement. And so, we are happy to bring to you at this point recommended PPEA guidelines for your consideration to implement this type of flexible process, and so that the city may be able to find more options for completing some of the various projects that the public is asking the city to complete, or that people would like to provide for the city. The final note that I'll make is the collection of guidelines that are provided, the contents of those guidelines is generally as prescribed within the legislative act that authorizes them. So if you were to go and look at the enabling legislation, a lot of the things in these guidelines, such as requiring some level of competition that is like public procurement, but not exactly identical to public procurement, or going through the motions of entering into a preliminary agreement followed up later by a final agreement, all of those things are contemplated within the statutory provisions themselves. So I just want you to know that we didn't create the guidelines out of whole cloth. We looked first to the statutory provisions of the PPEA laws, and then we looked at various guidelines and policies that other localities have adopted. So, at this time, we would recommend to you that we approve the guidelines as presented, and I'll take any questions you may have. I did receive information, there are a few typos within the guidelines, some of which are clerical in nature, and we can correct those. One of you did point out, however, that there was a discrepancy in the guidelines where there is an application fee provided, and staff's recommendation was for that application fee to be $1,500. However, there was a typo, so that it may be unclear to you reading it whether we intended 500 or 1,500, but staff's recommendation was 1,500.
So, council, have any questions? Clarifying questions?
Essentially, this is going to give us the freedom to work with local nonprofit partners. One of the things we can do with this is to work with local nonprofit partners on these, what I'll call, hybrid projects, where we're trying to accomplish something together, and there will be private funds coming in through the nonprofit, and we may be providing project management support or something like that on the city side. But this will give us flexibility in terms of how that, those procurements work. So I think it's, I think it's excellent.
Right. And I'll also note that it's, it will be very helpful with those projects, because those, to date, have been the projects that people, entities locally have been approaching you about. But if the Commonwealth of Virginia maintains a list, you have to report, as a locality, you have to report every year the projects that you do. And I think that all of our staff and facilities and school personnel, everyone should be aware that a number of jurisdictions have completed major school construction projects, major public building projects using the PPEA, and the process can be very useful for projects that are much larger and more extensive than the types of projects that have been presented to you so far. But this will provide a mechanism in which we can more formally commit to and enter into public-private partnerships with the nonprofit entities who are offering to provide improvements to your parks and other facilities.
Thank you.
Other questions, folks?
I'm happy to make a motion.
All right.
I move the resolution approving guidelines for the consideration and approval of public-private partnerships proposed to council October 3, 2022.
With the change to make clear that the application fee is $1,500?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Proposed on October 17th, so we'll...
Yeah, sorry about that. I wondered about that.
Yep.
Proposed to council October 17th, 2022.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
Councillor McGill?
Yes.
Councillor Payne?
Yes.
Councillor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
That also passes 5-0. Thank you. Next resolution, Jefferson School African-American Heritage Center Rent Agreement. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, sir. Mr. Stock, the item before you is a return for your consideration in regards to council providing rent in the amount of $107,203.32, which is intended to cover a new rent period from December 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023. This is a decision being offered for you to make in regards to providing the rent for the beginning phase of the new rental agreement that the Jefferson School African-American Heritage Center will execute for space in the Jefferson School City Center. The difference in this scenario is that the prior two iterations of payments going for the rent went to the Jefferson School escrow account. Instead, this will go directly to the African-American Heritage Center for them to remit payment on their own behalf in regards to their rent for the next six months. The reason for taking this action at this moment is to provide council the space that it needs to conduct its strategic planning session, to determine how it will engage in investments for moments like this, to invest in arrangements with nonprofit organizations going forward. But the goal was to give the Jefferson School a little more time, the African-American Heritage Center a little more time, to have their rent covered while you all take that action as a part of your strategic planning effort. So, staff is requesting approval of the item at this time.
Just to be clear, this is for seven months, beginning December 1st?
I'm sorry, that's correct. Seven months.
Running through the end of the fiscal year. Okay. Clarifying questions, anyone?
This has been paid from...
The council strategic initiatives fund.
Okay, so I guess at some point, somewhere along the way, there was a decision made that sort of, in principle, we were going to support this. I'm having a hard time remembering the history.
I think that was during last budget cycle.
The prior iterations of the rent agreements that you all have covered came from an equity fund that does not exist. It existed at that time when the first decision was made to extend a five-year period, and then to renew another five-year period. We no longer have that particular set of funds. So again, this was to give council an opportunity using funds that it did have available to provide you all more of a runway to conduct your strategic planning conversation, to then determine what next steps you would take.
Thank you.
Questions, anyone? Any other questions?
So is it just going to be, one question, so it's just going to be entirely in council's hands, how we discuss and decide what we should do after that seven-month period?
I think the way we were talking about it internally, and I'll allow the city manager to add any details, but the thought was that you all would take up the matter of investing in nonprofit organizations as a part of strategic planning, because the varying agreements that have come to light in the work that's been done in regards to leases and city-owned properties, they don't necessarily match, this being another anomaly for how we are doing the work that we're doing. And the goal would be that you would provide yourselves a little space to be able to have that conversation without the pressure of a budget session.
Understood. I mean, I guess it seems like practically, this will have to be part of our budget conversations this year. And I'll just say for myself, I would definitely want to prioritize finding a way for the Heritage Center to be able to stay there longer term. I know there's a bigger discussion about nonprofit leases and rentals, but I think it would be very short-sighted for us to lose some of these community spaces for just another restaurant, or, you know, whatever else.
Agreed. This is a vital community asset.
So this is the first of two readings. Is there agreement to carry this item to the November 7th meeting for a second reading?
Or consent agenda?
Well, that's going to be my next question. Let's first, we want to carry it on for the second reading?
Yes.
Councillor McGill's going thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay, and how about to the consent agenda? Thumbs up again?
Yeah.
Okay, there we have it. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. ARP funds. Mr. Cullinan?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Chris Cullinan, the city's director of finance. This item before you is an appropriation of American Rescue Plan funds totaling $565,000. There's currently about $2.3 million of unallocated ARP monies. This appropriation would utilize 565,000 of these unallocated funds for a total of four requests, which I'll summarize briefly. Request number one is for $50,000... Um, request number one is for fifty thousand dollars for an extension of the City Hall ambassadors program through the end of the current fiscal year through June of next year. Uh, request number two is for three hundred thousand dollars for the city's automated external defibrillator program for city facilities. Request number three is, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for city access control badges, both for, um, additional badges, but also updates to software and hardware. And then finally, request number four is for two hundred thousand dollars, the city's share, uh, to fund continuation of emergency shelter operations at Premier Circle. So again, this totals five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, if council were to appropriate these funds, that would leave a balance of roughly one point eight million dollars in unallocated A R P monies. Um, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. I believe Mr. Harrow is there with you in person. Should you have any questions on the Premier Circle item? Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cullinan? I do have one basic question, whether it's for Mr. Cullinan or for Mr. Harrow. Uh, what's the long-term expectation for Premier Circle? I thought that that was, was not a long-term solution for us.
Logan Anthony Harrow and Jason Whitehead is here as well as the director for Pacham. It is, the long-term is actually, it's going to be developed as permanent supportive housing and affordable housing. So that's the, that's the future of the site. Um, eighty units of permanent supportive housing is going to be developed by Virginia Supportive Housing. And then sixty units of a multifamily affordable housing will be developed as well by P H A. So the, the life of the emergency shelter portion is sunsetting. That is correct. And that's, that's what we, this request has been for is operations from January and through the end of April as we help to move, um, clients into housing.
And so what's that, what, what happens for those folks after April?
Well, we're doing our best to provide, you know,
Okay.
case management, transition to housing in the community. Should that not be available, housing is very difficult to come by, even though we have rental assistance opportunities. Um, and, and housing choice vouchers as well for some of the, for, for many, actually, many of the people at the Premier Circle program. Um, but we will do, you know, everything we can to help provide emergency shelter in another way, um, should there, should that still be needed.
And I take it that by, you know, April is when you would expect that the next phase or redevelopment or demolition or what, something else is going to happen inconsistent with their continued occupancy?
Correct. So in May, Virginia Supportive Housing plans to break ground and, um, on their eighty-unit facility, so.
And how long do we expect that to take to build?
I can't speak for them, but I do remember in conversation before they said about eighteen months.
Wow, okay. Okay, so, uh, this is just from January to April.
So, hi.
Hey.
Nice to see you.
You too.
Um, so the service that's there now, there are so many terms in this whole space that, um, deputy city manager, manager Marshall is always trying to, like, help me catch up. But, um, the, the current usage that we're supporting now is for emergency, uh, shelter. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. So, you know, Pacham's program, again, Jason, um, Whitehead is the director. They have been providing operations of not, we call it non-congregate emergency shelter, which basically means private rooms. And this was again, set up at the height of the pandemic in twenty twenty. When we started planning for this, we actually were able to move into the site after it was renovated in twenty twenty-one in May. Um, and so that was to prevent spread of COVID, right? We, we moved largely from congregate shelters into private rooms. And so it's, um, different in many ways from the traditional emergency shelter, like congregate style that many people are familiar with. However, it is still emergency shelter. And we're, you know, our focus is to help people move out of shelter and into permanent housing.
And then once this is gone, there will be, I guess, um, Salvation Army is a high-barrier shelter, I'm told. And then I guess Pacham will still be for the cold months. But beyond that, we don't have any other sort of standing facility.
That's correct. We, you know, one of the things we've identified in the community for a while, especially, um, since the pandemic, you know, many things have changed in how we've provided shelter in our community, but we need a year-round, um, you know, shelter site. And so we are, you know, working on that. There's upcoming opportunities, um, for funding as well through, through some of the A R P money. That's, that's coming available for, for grant proposals. Um, so yeah, year-round shelter site is certainly something we are working towards. Takes a lot to do properly, um, but we are absolutely, we see it as a need. I don't know if Jason, you want to speak at all?
Yeah, I, I can speak briefly to it. Hey there. Uh, um, Pacham has begun very actively to explore, um, what a, a permanent, uh, uh, like fixed site full year-round shelter would look like. Um, that's while, you know, continuing to run, um, Premier Circle where we have around seventy folks right now. And then we're also getting ready to open the hypothermia option again. But yeah, it's, it's very much on our minds and having worked with all of our folks at Premier Circle so intensely now, it's really on our, our hearts that they have somewhere to go as well.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, um, just two questions is one, there's this request for two hundred thousand between now, in, uh, April. Um, are you anticipating any, uh, additional needs coming from, um, whether it be the city or some other funding source after that point in order to, um, move forward with your current plan?
Well, this, this represents, you know, the, the end of this phase of the shelter program at Premier Circle. Um, we, you know, like Jason said, and I can, and he can definitely speak. We, we look forward to partnering in future, um, shelter programming, um, especially if a year-round shelter is, is found, uh, you know, like a site for one. Um, but not for this portion of the project, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I guess it's kind of an unclear question. I mean, it's kind of both. I mean, in, when you're looking at possible sites for a permanent shelter, you mentioned A R P. Are you anticipating that if you found a site, that most of it could be paid for with, um, existing A R P programs? Or would you assume that some significant amount would need to come from localities? Or is that an unknown at this point?
That's probably an unknown. However, with property values being what they are, it's likely, from my, from my understanding of what, what, I think there's, if I'm not, I'm not mistaken, there's about a million dollars in the, that was proposed, that for nonprofits to apply for, for housing slash homeless, um, programming. So I, I don't know. It's, it's hard to say right now.
No, and I, I can appreciate that. I'm just, with everything like this, I'm trying to think of what's even a ballpark number, um, because our budget presentation earlier.
Well, I can certainly come back to you. I, I'm not prepared. I haven't, I don't have any properties that we've actively, you know, like, been looking at for this, um, necessarily. So I, it's hard to say at this moment, but most likely we would, again, like I said, love to partner on, on something like this for, especially for a year-round shelter.
And I totally understand that. Um, it's just helpful for me and I think all of council to have something in the back of our mind because with inflation on existing projects, what we're looking at in terms of wages, um, I think this is a high priority. And I just want to make sure that council is able to have a number. So we'd know if we decide not to fund this, we knew what the number was and we knew what we chose to invest in instead. And sometimes we don't always
Yeah.
know that when we make our decisions. And I just don't want us to end up in that situation this budget cycle.
Well, I really appreciate that and I, and we can certainly provide that to you, um, at a later time, if that's okay.
Yeah, I would, I would absolutely second that. I mean, I know you've got a lot of different, I'm sure you have a lot of different things you're trying to fit together, but if there is some sort of long-range strategic plan or whatever for a service like this, for this, I don't know, region, at least the city and the county and maybe a couple of counties around, um, I would love to, to see that. And, you know, I'm, I believe the city, maybe we could partner with Impact or whomever, I don't know. But, um, in the county, try to figure out something that's, that's permanent.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would like to see like a, a true mission center type where you can go in and really get all the services that they need and not necessarily direct them to a different place. And I know, I think Roanoke has one, some other cities have places like that. That's what I would long-term envision, um, a place that, um, it's on a bus line or just accessible. And we may not have that in the city right now or, you know, that's readily identifiable. But that, that's what I like to see long-term. But, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out as a community, you know, together.
Well, I really appreciate that interest and, and, and thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we appreciate all the work y'all do. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I would just add that, that there is a real willingness to include the city. And so we, we've just basically begun the exploration process, but would certainly love to involve all of you.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, so council, we, this is a one of two readings. Are we agreeing to carry this on to November seventh?
Yes.
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 And for a second reading, uh, on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. I see a thumbs up from Counselor McGill there, so now we're really good. Okay, that, that's, uh, taken care of. Finally, on the action items, twenty thousand dollars for the, in conjunction with the plastic bag tax. Mr. Sanders?
All right, one last item for you. Uh, this item in front of you is in regards to appropriating funds for bag distribution in relation to the plastic bag tax that goes into effect January one, twenty twenty-three. As you all recall, the General Assembly approved to make it possible for localities to enable, um, the imposition of a disposable bag tax. We, along with Albemarle County, will be launching that January one. I've continued to work closely with the county, uh, to make sure that our efforts are in alignment with theirs so that because our residents move back and forth between the city and the county, we want to ensure that there's no real concern in regards to understanding what's different about whatever we may be doing. So our goal is to try to do it in, in conjunction with one another. At this time, what we're asking you to do is to appropriate twenty thousand dollars. It is, uh, a submission of a number. Uh, I have spoken through, uh, Alex's work to try to find, uh, multiple communities around the state with some methodology for determining a fair number to anticipate. Uh, twenty thousand dollars appeared to be a number that we all felt good about in common. Uh, so again, that methodology is not, uh, is not based on anything other than we think it's a fair number to begin with, what the generation of tax might produce. Uh, our focus is to use those funds to simply acquire recyclable bags that will be used for the distribution to SNAP and WIC eligible individuals, which is one of the four eligible permissible uses, uh, for these funds, uh, according to the legislation that was enacted. It is our desire that we would eventually be able to come back to council once we have better clarity as to how much is generated, that there may be a surplus over the replacement of this twenty thousand dollars, that we might be able to expand bag distribution for other, uh, populations that may need that intervention, as well as begin to take a look at the additional options for environmental cleanup, litter and pollution mitigation, and environmental education efforts. Those are the other three permissible activities for what you can do with those funds. Uh, the desire is to be able to do this. Again, we wanted to focus on a high recycle content bag to make this a part of our climate action work. Timing of that being what it is, I wouldn't dare bring you a bag that was not of high recycle value. Uh, so the goal was to be able to get these bags ordered, have them available. Uh, we've started the conversation with our Department of Social Services and will be working in conjunction with them and the Health Department to distribute these bags as multiple bags would go to households in each of those, uh, client pools. Uh, ideally, the preference would be that two bags per household would be generated. Uh, and then of course, as more, uh, funds are made available and based on the supply lasting or not lasting, then the desire would be to, to come back and acquire additional bags and increase that distribution, uh, pipeline as well.
Counselors, questions?
Sounds excellent.
How much does a bag cost, do we think?
Three dollars and fifty-seven cents.
So that means we could buy five thousand of them for twenty thousand dollars.
And we're hoping that we can get a discount. Um, I am a fundraiser by trade and I have been able to also ask for discounts. So that is being processed at this time. And we're hoping that we'll be able to get, uh, a discount because of the volume that we intend to purchase and that we would like to be a repeat customer. So we will have more information on that shortly.
Okay, so this is also first of second, first of two readings. Is there agreement to carry this item to the November seventh meeting for a second reading on the consent agenda?
Yes.
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 Okay, thumbs up. So that is done. That is all of our general, uh, that's all of our scheduled business. Are there any other business items for consideration? Any items we want, uh, the city management to follow up on? Okay, so we now come to the last community matters section. Uh, final speaking opportunity for members of the public. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. You may join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar and by pressing star nine if you've joined the phone, uh, joined by phone. And there's nobody else here in chambers, so I'm not going to read about that option. Any speakers online?
Yes, Mayor Snook, Tanisha Hudson is back with us.
Ms. Hudson?
You are on with council.
So I'm just a little curious. So I know that the equity fund was funded some years back. Um, I would love for someone on council to respond. You don't have to do it on the mic. You could do it through email. Why wasn't funded again? Um, you fund everything else. That particular fund funded a lot of stuff. Um, so I'm just curious why that wasn't continual funding. Um, something else I wanted to bring up, um, earlier, um, it's just a few things. I feel like if community matters, I don't feel like the community is, is, is always the first priority here. I think it's a lot of friends of friends. Um, this Public Private Education Facility Infrastructure Act, I hope that we're not partnering with nonprofits that we've served either on the board for, we've been the president for, we've been a part of. I hope that none of your friends are going to be partnered with doing anything with building these schools and doing this construction work for, um, enhancing the schools. Uh, cause I might have a problem with that, cause a lot of that goes on in Charlottesville. Um, like I said before about the police officers, uh, Brian, you brought up the situation in West Haven. If y'all really cared about West Haven, you would give those people better housing, number one. Like the, the amount of what you could do to better those people's situations, you don't do. But Brian, you were quick to speak up for that J P A project, saying more than once that they gave more money than anybody to the Affordable Housing Fund of five hundred and forty-nine thousand. You can't remodel West Haven with five hundred and forty-nine thousand or however much money it was that they gave. You, you, that's not possibly enough money to redevelop West Haven and knock it all down and build something else back up. So once again, if community matters, and this is everybody in the community, not just your little friends at U V A, not just your little lawyer friends, Lloyd, not your friends, Mike Onsina, and not your friends, Juan Diego from the school board. Everybody in the community matters. And you need to start including those at the bottom that aren't going to be in these meetings to speak up for themselves. Have a good night.
Good night, Ms. Hudson. Is there anyone else online?
This, I guess, will be the final call. You may raise your hand if you're joining us on Zoom, star nine if you're joining us by phone. Otherwise, Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right, so I'll close that community matters section. Anything else to be done before we adjourn? Hearing nothing, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.